Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let me welcome my colleagues, staff, and citizens of Richland County for our fiscal year 2022 budget hearing. I'm calling this meeting to order. Let me ask our clerk to call the roll for attendance.
Malinowski?
Here.
Hugh?
Here.
McBride?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Teracio?
Here.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Here.
Overture Walker?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And I'd like to just make one amendment to the agenda. If there's no objections, is before we sign the public hearing, an opportunity, we do have the county administrator for closing remarks, but I'd also like the county administrator to present whatever open remarks you'd like to present, since it is his budget that we're, that's been presented to council. So if there's no objections, we'll add prior, after adoption of agenda, is comments from the county administrator, reference the budget. There's no objection, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Move. Move in progress. Second, any other discussions, deletions? Mr. Brown, do you have anything to reference the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Please recognize.
Thank you. I, you know, I just want to acknowledge that this is a very different kind of process than, this is only my second budget. It's very different from last time when we were all in chambers together and the public was able to come in physically and sign up. This has been a different process for those who would like to present to us. And I believe that maybe it was not entirely made clear exactly how groups could present to us, and some of those were not able to do so, to get in in a timely fashion. And I would just advocate, if possible, if there is another opportunity for folks to make their voices heard.
That is at the discretion of council. Yes. Mr. Hugh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to echo the same sentiments as my colleague, Mr. Teracio. I've received several correspondence from constituents about not being able to present budgets, and I've also received a comment saying that they were told that the agenda was full. So if there's another opportunity, I think we owe it to the community. Thank you, sir.
Yes, and we'll have our discussion at the end. See, again, the motion was for adoption of the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? If not, Mrs. Matthews, can you call the roll for the motion to adopt the agenda?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teracio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, you're recognized to present your budget.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of council, thank you again for an opportunity to have a conversation about briefly remarks on the county budget. The information that we've provided to you so far hopefully has been beneficial. We're certainly encouraged, each of you, if you have additional questions throughout the remainder of this process, to certainly seek out information from myself, Lori Thomas, the Assistant County Administrator, or Director of Budget and Grants Management, Director Hayes. So appreciated, Mr. Chair. We would just ask that, as you consider all of the issues that are currently going on, certainly with the kind of coming to a conclusion, hopefully, of the pandemic, some of the nuances of this year that may have been different from previous years in terms of things we have to consider for budgeting, that you will take all that into consideration when you review my recommendations, and I'm certainly willing to hear any additional feedback from council during the motions process, and will adjust my budget accordingly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Let me just quick, before we get started, and just for a few house rules, and, you know, according to council rules, as relates to a hearing, public hearing, each person who wishes to speak will have two minutes to speak, and that will be the comments that were submitted. Also, according to council rules, council allows up to thirty minutes for those comments, but council has the right to waive the rules once it gets to thirty minutes as it relates to those comments. If council wished to hear comments beyond that thirty-minute period, it's important to recognize that stability is very important. Any statements that we receive with acquisitions, accusatory, derogatory, or making reference, those type references to council members or staff or any citizen, they will not be presented. Council have received copies of all of the statements that have been presented. For the record, I think important to know that, if some did end up not getting read tonight, it does not mean council may not have that particular information. And as we get started, our clerk will start reading the various statements that were presented for council to hear. You heard some comments earlier about perhaps there was some individuals somewhat confused about the process. Of course, this is the first time we've had to do this, so obviously, it's not surprising that there may be some confusion. At the end, it is, if council chooses, it has the right to schedule a public hearing, whatever they wish to, if that is the will of council, to accommodate for any problems that occurred as a result of the information shared regarding the public hearing. With that said, we'll start with those comments that was presented to the clerk at or prior to the deadline, or submitted those comments. And I'll ask the clerk at this point, unless there's a specific question about the comments that have been submitted from my colleagues, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and present those comments.
Thank you, sir, and we're going to start reading those. Because of the quantity of those comments, we have split these up so that one of us will start reading and then another, and then another, so that we, so you'll hear three different voices throughout. So, Tamar?
Hold one minute, please. And please, when we get to, per council rules, when we get to that thirty-minute timeframe, please let me know so I can put forth that to council to decide how they want to proceed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Tamar?
All right, this comment is from the Richland County Library. Dear Richland County Council, thank you so much for allowing me a moment to make a statement on behalf of Richland County Library and share my thoughts with you. Throughout the COVID-19 health pandemic, Richland Library has supported our community by keeping its essential services open and available to the public. Every day, Richland Library continues to remove barriers by providing services that help improve the quality of life of people all over the county, including me. In 2021, I found myself entering the workforce for the first time in more than a decade. I was unsure of where to start or how to begin looking for the right position. Thankfully, with the help of the library's business and career staff, I was able to write a comprehensive resume that reflected my work experience and had me more attracted to hiring managers. Furthermore, library staff conducted interview practice sessions and supported me applying for positions that matched my experience. Their encouragement and assistance sparked a blaze deep within me to achieve more goals. I'm happy to report that I am, I'm happy to report that with the help of the library, in April 21st, 2021, I was offered a job and accepted a new position. After twelve years, I am pleased to say that I am now back into the workforce. I cannot say enough about the library, and I highly recommend this crucial and indispensable program to my fellow job seekers, especially with the recent decisions to cancel unemployment in South Carolina. More people are going to be looking for employment and could benefit from these skills. Our community is better served because of the Richland County Library, and I'm asking that you please continue to fund the library and its services because we know that the library, like other agencies, will make good, responsible choices to make a great community even better. Thank you for your time and consideration, Cheryl Hammond. Michelle?
This comment is from Elizabeth Lights. Thank you for the opportunity to make a statement on behalf of Richland Library and share my experience with you. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Richland Library has continued to be a beacon of hope for our community connecting with local residents in new ways and providing essential services. I know firsthand because I was able to gain access to a Wi-Fi hotspot with my library car. Over the last year, broadband became a basic necessity to take part in job interviews, speak with your doctor, or attend school. Due to unforeseen circumstances, I couldn't afford to pay my cable and internet bill. I was at my wit's end, making sure my children could continue learning virtually, and the library became my lifesaver. By providing a Wi-Fi hotspot, my children were able to communicate with their teachers, interact with their classmates, and complete their assignments. As I write this letter to you, I have tears in my eyes because I didn't know where to turn. I don't know what I would have done without my local library. Words cannot express my gratitude. I know our community is better served because of their efforts to improve the quality of life for local residents like me throughout the county. I ask you to please continue funding Richland Library, its incredible resources, services, and programs. Like other agencies in our community, it strives to make our community better each and every day.
Andrea?
This is from Melissa Dunn, who works with United Way. I hope this email finds you doing well. On behalf of the United Way of the Midlands, I, Melissa Dunn, Director of Education, request permission to address the council at the public hearing on Thursday, May 20th, 2021, via Zoom at 6:00 PM. On the lump sum renewal request in the amount of $281,455, that was submitted to Richland County staff in continued support and expansion of the Resilient Richland, a movement to build Richland County into a trauma-informed resilient community. RR aims to reduce the stigma of trauma and equip individuals and organizations with information and skills to build resilience among children and youth. The county's current general fund supports two resiliency teams located at Watkins Nance and Jackson Creek Elementary Schools. Our budget proposal includes continuing these teams plus adding a team at Hyatt Park Elementary School. In addition, these funds would allow for support for continued efforts in community education and training efforts to address trauma within Richland County. The county has generously supported these programs in the current budget, and we hope they will be able to continue doing so in the upcoming fiscal year. Additionally, I have attached resilient Richmond letters of support from parents and teachers impacted by Richland County's investment and the resiliency teams at both Watkins Nance Elementary School and Jackson Creek Elementary School. If you have the time to read through these letters, they paint a very clear picture as to why this work is important to continue. Last, I have attached original Richland County proposals submitted to staff. Please let me know what the next steps are and what other information we can provide to you that we may be of assistance. Sincerely, Melissa.
Midlands Tech, Faith Bessie. Good evening, I'm Faith Bessie. I'm a resident of Richland County, and I reside at 1121 Rock Knoll Drive, Columbia. I am currently attending Midlands Technical College, and I am pursuing an associate of science degree in nursing. Before attending Midlands College, I was a student at CA Floral High School. When I first enrolled in Midlands Technical College, I made sure I did not begin with the general misconception people had about technical colleges, and that, and this has played a huge role as to where I am today. I told myself to experience all there is to experience at this school. I indulged myself in activities that helped me grow. I joined organizations and communities that five to ten years from now, I will not regret joining. I am entirely grateful that I started off my higher education at Midlands Technical College because it has small class sizes which helped me learn better. I am able to have one-on-one help with my professors. Being a student at MTC has exposed me to a lot of people who will, are always ready to help me succeed. The staff has helped me whenever I needed help, and I have had great opportunities to join national, nationally-recognized organizations. Midlands Technical College has provided me with numerous opportunities and prepared me for well-paying employment opportunities that are in a high demand in the local area. I have the honor of being the ambassador of Midlands Technical College, where I'm able to serve other people, which I love. As a future nurse, that is a criteria that I must meet, so the opportunity is training me for that. I recently was able to help provide assistance during the employment appreciation event. It was an experience that I am glad to say I was a part of because I was able to express my gratitude to the teachers and staff at Midlands Tech. I am also a member of the National Society of Leadership and Success, and that itself is wonderful because I get to learn new things from the amazing guest speakers. I recently interviewed for the Student Advisory Board, and if I get to be chosen, it would be an honor. MTC has in fact prepared me well for the next step in my educational career time. Michelle?
The next comment is from Zachary Young. Good evening, everyone. I am Zachary Young, a recent graduate of Midlands Technical College. I am honored to have the pleasure of speaking to you all today. I am a resident of Richland County myself. I live close to the Village of Sand Hills. I have lived in Richland County for my entire life, and I have stayed within the county for all of my education. It was only a few years ago that I graduated out of the Discovery Program at Spring Valley High School, and here I am now, speaking as a proud graduate of Midlands Tech, but I'm not just proud because of what I achieved personally, I'm proud because I was able to get closer to my goals thanks to all of the opportunities that Midlands Tech provided. When I first enrolled at MTC, my confidence in my future was low. After having to take a gap year and watching my friends and classmates be gone without me, I had fully believed that I had no shot at a college-level education, but Midlands Tech provided a chance to change that. Through their low tuition and scholarships, I was able to continue on my educational journey. Through their invested staff and professors, I was able to get the support and connections I needed to succeed. I was even able to rebuild my confidence and improve myself as a person. I've had the opportunity to serve as a part of Midlands Tech's ambassador assembly since last fall, and I can say with certainty that doing so changed me for the better. In that way, my time at MTC has prepared me well for the next step of my life, more than just academically. In the beginning, I felt like I could only worry about myself. Now I feel like I can reach my own goals and help others achieve theirs. I am not the only one whose life has benefited from attending MTC. If someone such as myself was able to get their chance to succeed despite the odds, then it should be no surprise that others have and will rely on this opportunity too. On behalf of those students, we are grateful for your steady commitment to Midlands Technical College, and we appreciate the investment you've made in our futures. Thank you for your time and generous support.
Andrea?
This comment is from Gina Leslie. I am Gina Leslie, resident, president of the Board of Trustees of Historic Columbia, and I reside in Richland County District Eight. I am here to thank you for your support of Historic Columbia and ask you to continue this support in the coming year. Since 1994, Historic Columbia and Richland County have been partners in the preservation of some of the Midlands' most significant historic assets, two of which, the Hampton Preston Mansion and the Museum of Reconstruction, are owned by the county. Your support allows us to use local history as a tool to educate the public, to draw visitors to the region, and to establish preservation as an economic driver. As you know, Historic Columbia is resilient on a robust stream of earned income that comes from public programs, events, and rental to balance the gap in the funds it takes to operate the county-owned sites. As we were unable to generate these funds due to pandemic-driven closures for the last fourteen months, our talented team had to get creative to navigate the new normal. Staff continue to provide the essential services of helping people feel connected to the unique sense of the place that our historic places provide, whether that is through a virtual tour of Lower Richland, a live-streamed research roundtable that introduces attendees to genealogy and family trees, or an in-person socially-distanced partnership with the South Carolina Philharmonic, where visitors enjoy a concert in the gardens at Hampton Preston. We continue to be committed to helping people connect with the places and stories that are important for our community. That said, we have had to make significant cuts to our operation, which makes the county's support more important than ever. On behalf of Historic Columbia and your constituents, seeking to better understand our rich and complex history, thank you for your past and future support. Gina Leslie.
Tamar?
Columbia Museum of Art, this is from Amos Della Watkins. Good evening, my name is Della Watkins, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Columbia Museum of Art, CMA. I reside at 420 Joshua Street, Columbia, South Carolina, District Five. Thanks to each of you for your civic service and opportunity to present a statement before you at today's budget hearing. As a Richland County resident and nonprofit leader, I hope council will consider reviewing your stable support for the hospitality tax ordinance agencies, including the CMA this year. Having just celebrated its seventieth anniversary, the CMA is the cultural heartland of Richland County, beloved by residents and visitors alike. Indigent Museum has increased its offerings, improving its communication with schools, organization leaders, and outreach directly to residents who live and work in unincorporated Richland County, all in order to provide return on investment. At a White House ceremony in 2016, the CMA was the only art museum in the county, in the country, to win a national medal, the nation's highest honor of museums and service in their communities, shining in the national spotlight on Richmond County Museum. As a cultural capital, your museum collection exhibits and programs are safe, open, and active. Last year blockbuster exhibit, the Van Gogh, His Inspiration, was the largest in museum history, welcoming more than 63,000 visitors from all over the fifty states and more than two dozen countries. Importantly, visitors continue to grow steadily as we emerge to a bright spring and summer. It especially warms my heart to see schoolchildren in the CMA gallery studios safely engaging in world-class art and top-notch educators. In the coming years, we will build on success by opening several remarkable exhibitions, including a premiere show for contemporary African-American artwork. Please know that you are welcome to our museum at any time, and please always feel free to contact me with your thoughts, questions, or ideas. Thank you again for your partnership and support of the Columbia Museum of Art. Time, Michelle?
I am Eugene Washington, and I have served as project manager for five documentary films that were funded by RCC. My duties included writing the budget, researching, recording, and editing materials, presenting films to the public, and depositing films and hard copies to libraries and community centers. Below you will find the links to two of those films, Waverly Fun Facts and Come Home to Waverly, that celebrates the Waverly community. Waverly Fun Facts is the youth version of the Waverly story, and all the film's participants, speakers, researchers, and music arranger were sixteen and under. Those youth spotlighted former Waverly residents like federal judge Matthew Perry and civil rights icon Jessica Simpson. Another film, Votersville, which can be found on YouTube, chronicles the Greenview Neighborhood, which is one of the most powerful voting enclosures in this state. A voting enclave that once included US Congressman James Clyburn, State Senator Kay Patterson, and South Carolina House Representatives Joe Brown and James Felder, once again students, researchers, and speakers. After public screenings, the films were screened at local middle schools, and the students were captivated by the presentations of youth their own age and raised, African-American. And many students took permission forms home to their parents as to get involved with other film programs. It is an absolute must that you continue to fully fund the RCC because we must keep our youth engaged in efforts such as the aforementioned film, include, instead of gangs and idleness, we cannot and must not say that there's not enough money when our youths are interested in a positive outlook such as history and filmmaking. Additionally, there are adults who are not aware of the bountiful history in Richland County. The neighborhood of Ridgewood has long had a reputation as a wasteland, but the RCC-funded film, Can Anything Good Come From Ridgewood, documented the magnificent, a residence like Estelle Trapp Young, who rose from a lowly city meter maid to a captain in Columbia PD, and Benjamin Mack, who was a lieutenant to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. There are people who were born and reared in Lower Richland and don't know what the Gaston area was once named. It's time.
Andrea?
This email is from Martha Fowler. I have borne witness to the great work done by Richland County Conservation Commission for many years, and I am a supporter of their work. Kindly restore their funding to allow them to continue to assist our community to grow and prosper. Conserving what we have and building for our future is vital for the future of our community, our county. Should you want to speak with me about my personal experiences in recent years, I am at your service. Martha Fowler.
Tamar?
This is from Angela Vandeley. Good evening, I'm a resident of Richland County, and I'm asking you to please restore the Conservation Division funding to at least last year's levels and consider adding additional funds to promote conservation efforts in Richland County. I have lived in Richland County most of my life, having grown up in Dinsville area where I attended Joseph Kill's, EL Wright, and Spring Valley, and currently live in northeast Richland County where my kids go to Dent and, excuse me, Dent and Spring Valley. I majored in chemical engineering and decided to get a master's in environmental engineering because I realized our environment desperately needs protection. I work as a water resource engineer, focusing on surface water quality all over South Carolina, and know firsthand how important it is for local and know firsthand how important it is for local surface water quality. Government programs such as Richland County Conservation Division to focus on educating citizens ranging from average school-age students to adults, including farmers, how their actions can help or hurt the environment. The work of Richland County Conservation Division to educate citizens about conservation practices and behaviors is so important to prevent damage that developed and farming practices can have natural resources. One particular project that I worked on as a stakeholder with the Richland County Conservation Division and the Richland Soil and Water Conservation was a 319 grant to install best management practices in 25-mile creek watershed, a watershed impaired by bacteria. This project was managed by Chandra Cooper with the Richland County Conservation Division, and subsequently, Herschel County, my client, implemented a second 319 grant to repair septic systems in the same watershed. After these two projects were implemented, the number of samples in the 25-mile creek exceeding water quality standards for bacteria was decreased by more than 30%. This type of improvement in water quality would not have been possible without the Richland County Conserv- Time.
Okay. Amelia Cotties said the last comment is in the county. As a resident of northeast Richland County for over 50 years, I've seen it grow from a small rural area to a sprawling, mostly urban area. This is not the time to cut services to Richland County Conservation. It is needed more now than ever. As a master gardener, I've among the shrinking national spaces and educational opportunities for children and adults as well. Please reconsider this ill-conceived change to their budget. Thank you for your service to Richland County. Andrea.
This comment is from Thomas Kohsak. My name is Thomas Kohsak. My comments have to do with the Conservation Commission's FY 22 through 23 capital projects account. I am retired from the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources where I headed the South Carolina Heritage Trust Program for many years. Like Richland County Conservation Commission, the Heritage Trust Program is dedicated to protecting significant natural areas and historic resources. As a state employee, I often heard it was a cardinal sin to leave money unspent at the end of the fiscal year. That was a sure way to get your budget reduced in the next year's budget cycle. On the other hand, I also heard the refrain that government should be run like a business. Before joining DNR, I worked for several years in industry. Money was always tight, but I don't think anyone was ever penalized for not spending money fast enough. So I've never quite been able to reconcile these two points of view. Spend money before someone else gets it or carry it over for contingencies and capital projects like businesses do. Land conservation requires a degree of liquidity. Sometimes you have to act fast when opportunities arise or properties cost more than a year's worth of revenue. For these reasons, it was also customary for Heritage Trust to run a balance on its land protection funds, and I expect it's the same for non-government conservation organizations. Put simply, it is good business to maintain a balance of capital funds to carry forward to take advantage of conservation opportunities when they arise. Like these institutions, the Richland County Conservation Commission is endowed with the source of dedicated capital funds to carry out its conservation work. The intent of the fund is to provide liquidity for proprietary acquisitions and capital projects. As you've heard from folks in the last few days, they seem to be doing a pretty good job. Along with other conservation organizations, the commission could dip into its capital funds if necessary. That's time.
Sam Holland. Dear Chairman and the members of Richland County Council, I was appointed to the Richland County Conservation Commission 17 years ago by Councilman Damon Jeter. This commission was in its infancy. There was a controversy at the time. Some of our local folks thought that the RCC was trying to steal their land through conservation easements. Of course, that was not true, but it did make the rounds and got some landlords' feathers ruffled. It took some time to shake the stigma and regain trust, but we did it in a big way. We regrouped, defined our mission, and set out to make Richland County a better place to live and raise a family. We began our grant program to help save and improve historic structures, which in many cases would have been lost. We have countless success stories all across the county. You pass them every day. If you catch a movie at the Mick Downtown, one of our projects. You enjoy an event at the Harriet Barber House, one of our projects. Eat lunch at Curtis Wright Hanger, one of our projects. If you attend service at one of the many historic churches in the county, you might notice stained glass we have helped restore. And when I say "we," I mean you. County Council, the staff, commission members, and all of us working together. One example that I will highlight. 15 years ago, the roof of 701 Wiley Street had fallen in. It was far gone to be saved until Richard Birch came to us and asked for some money. Not the millions to restore the building to its original glory, but some money to do a documentary film to make a case why this structure needed to be saved. The commission took the leap of faith and gave him the $25,000. He showed the film to bankers and investors. The small film illustrated the importance of saving such a worthy structure and was joined the effort. The RCC has had many successes over the years, and we have been very good stewards of our taxpayers' money. Time.
Stuart White sent this comment in. On behalf of the Board and staff of Congress Land Trust, a nonprofit conservation organization operating across the Midlands of South Carolina, I respectfully request that FY 22 funding for the Richland County Conservation Division be restored to last year's levels and that department's status be reinstated for the Conservation Division. The RCCD has a proven record of accomplishment in delivering impactful conservation project outcomes that benefit the citizens of Richland County and the state. The currently proposed budget will result in a significant reduction in funding for Richland County Conservation Commission programs, services, and education by demanding the commission's special revenue fund absorb the costs of the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District and land management on multiple conservation and mitigation properties. This use of special revenue funding is inappropriate as the WRCD is a subdivision of state government and is not a project of RCC. County ordinance states that the RCC's special revenue funding is to be solely for RCC projects and activities. Department's status for RCCD should be restored to enable the Richland County Conservation Commission and Richland Soil and Water Conservation District to have input into the budgeting process and provide direct oversight of finances and staff. Congress Land Trust staff has been privileged to collaborate with and serve alongside the staff of RCCD and considers their programs a critical part preserving the equality of life for all in the Midlands. Andrea.
This comment is from Gail Rodriguez. I, Gail Rodriguez, respectfully request that my comments be entered into the official record of the Richland County Budget Public Hearing to be held on May 20, 2021. As though having been read orally during the public hearing, I am providing these written comments as the Richland County Conservation Commission District 11 Commissioner and resident and taxpayer of Richland County. I am a recent appointee to the RCCC and an eight-year resident of Lower Richland. I have lived in multiple states and as a professional engineer, I have worked at the federal, state, and county levels. There is a steep learning curve for newer commissioners because the RCCC does so much within the county, both for historic preservation and conservation. In addition, there are the laws, ordinance, and ordinances affecting the operation of the county and the commission. I am not an expert in any of those areas, but I am learning. In general, I see the RCCC fund balance as a major issue in the budget decisions. The RCCC has been crippled by the loss of staff during the last two years and the lack of cooperation in filling those positions by administration. It takes the time and effort to spend funds responsibly, and that is very difficult without staff. That does not mean that the RCCC does not need those funds or should give them up for any other purposes. Those funds will be utilized for efforts such as resolving issues at Pinewood Lake Park and Mill Creek, both key areas in Lower Richland. In addition, many grants require matching funds. Without those funds available, the RCCC would not be available to apply those grants within the time restraints. I know you will hear the details of the financials from other commissioners, but this is my opportunity to express that the RCC is dedicated and a responsible entity. And I am proud to serve. Please restore our proposed FY 22 budget to FY 21 levels. That's time.
Next comment is from Tim McSwain. Dear Richland County Council, please find contained herein my letter comments my written comments on proposed Richland County FY 22 budget. I respectfully request these comments be entered into the official record of Richland County's FY 22 budget public hearing as though, having been read, I will orally allow during the public hearing. I am providing these comments as the District Two Commissioner of the Richland County Conservation Commission and as an associate commissioner of the Richland County Soil and Water District. Richland County's proposed FY 22 budget eliminates 100% of general fund of general fund support for the Richland County Soil and Water Conservation District as well as the land management of Richland County Conservation Commission. Responsibilities of Pinewood Lake, Mill Creek, and Cabin Branch Properties totaling $37,918. The proposal demands the Richland County Conservation Commission's special revenue funds absorb these costs. This reduction will significantly reduce funding for conservation programs, services, and educational opportunities available in Richland County and statewide. Please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and restore Conservation Division to department status as it was prior to former Administrator Gerald Seale's reorganization in March 2017. Richland County Administrator did not engage with RCCC or RCSW prior to creating and submitting the FY 22 budget, which is ethically and morally wrong, as well as poor management. The thought process seems to be that since the money is in RCCC's special fund revenue, that this is not an issue with the budget reduction. This could not be further from the truth. The RCC's special fund revenue balance is approximately $2.2 million, and the fund is structured. Time.
The next comment is from Jane Killer. I'm writing to ask the Richland County Council to restore Conservation Division funded to last year's levels and restore the Richland County Conservation Division to department status. The commissioners of both Richland Soil and Water Conservation District and Richland County Conservation Commission are requesting this in order to have direct input to the administration for budgeting and oversight of their finances and staff. The proposed cut of general fund support for the RCWCD projects will require the RCC's special revenue fund to absorb these costs, significantly reducing funding for conservation programs, services, and educational opportunities along with land management projects that address issues such as flooding and wetland protection and restoration. Furthermore, the RCC's special revenue fund is designated by our county ordinance for the sole use of the RCC for its projects and activities. The RSWCD, which is a division of state government established under state law more than 80 years ago, is not a project or activity of the RCC, and therefore, use of special revenue funding in this manner is inappropriate. In the past, the RCC's special fund balance has been structured to allow fund balances not expended during any fiscal year be carried forward for the identification, acquisition, lease, protection, preservation, or development of resources. Not spending its entire funding allotment each year is an intentional strategy used by RCC to build up its fund balance in order to cover major conservation expenses. Historically large conservation expenses such as land acquisitions have occurred about every five years. This strategy should be applauded rather than penalized. If citizens were forced to spend their entire earnings each year, families could never save for emergency and college funds for retirement. Citizens should expect the same careful money management they practice themselves from their local government. Audits show that Richland County has a healthy general fund balance. Therefore, any discussions around budget cuts being necessary to reduce dependence on withdrawals from the general fund balance seem unfounded. That's time.
Mr. Livingston, we're right at time. We're right at 30 minutes now. You're on mute, Mr. Livingston.
This is reference to my colleagues. For our rules, our public hearings are limited by the management unless counted to waive the rules. Let me ask a quick question from the clerk. Possibly, how many more?
So we have read 12 of 45.
12 of 45 from the same reference, the same issue?
The remaining are dealing with the conservation issue, yes.
At this time, again, the public here within, unless one of my colleagues will attend a motion to waive the rules to continue with the-
Mr. Chair.
Rachel, you're recognized.
I would waive our, I would move to waive our rules to continue to hear public comment. Is there, would that be limited to the written comment that's already submitted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be, how many more again, Ms.?
I'm sorry, I don't do math in my head well. So we've read 12 of 45.
33.
Thank you.
Mr. Mallon, as you recognize, and then Ms. Mackey, and then Ms. Barron.
Hey, Mr. Chair. I might point out, unless others did not get it, that we have been provided every single one of these letters and comments that are being read. So it is really a duplication of effort at this point in time, since we already have them. If folks didn't get them, I think they could avail themselves of them through the clerk's office, but I have already read through every one of them. It's like watching 35 reruns here. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, maybe I can make a different motion?
Your motion, I didn't hear, I didn't hear a second for your motion. That's kind of real.
Correct. I don't think-
That's why I moved on. So let me, I'll come back to you and allow, because Ms. Mackey and Ms. Barron have their hand up.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we can continue on with the reading of the comments that we have received.
Period motion, that's second. The mover and propeller, second, to continue reading the responses that was received. Ms. Barron, you recognize for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I had a question. It was unclear to me if Ms. Mathis was stating that there is only 45 left to have been read for the Conservation Commission, or are there outside of the 45? Are there other letters from other entities that also must be read?
No, ma'am, there are 45 letters total, and we've read 12 of those 45 total.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, address Ms. Mathis.
Yes.
And so my question is, of those 45, do we have other letters that are also needing to be read into the record?
So I guess that's the question before us. Would you like these letters read into the record?
No, I don't think you understand my question. My question is, outside of the 45, do we have any different entities, other organizations, that we also need to read?
No, ma'am.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
Any further discussion, reference to the motion. Motion was to waive the rules to allow the continuation of the remainder of the letter.
Mr. Chair, I just, Mr. Mallon.
Mr. Mallon, and then- Mr. Rachel, was that you?
Yes, it's me. So I just have a question. Would we, if we choose to have these, if we vote to have these continue to be read, is it also still possible to have other comments from also submitted? So essentially, establish a second opportunity for a public hearing?
Yes, that would have to take place in a regular council meeting because you can't take action here in the budget.
Okay, thank you. I will-
You can make later, yes.
Okay, I will make a note of that for the future.
Mr. Mallon, you recognize.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a substitute motion. The fact that these letters have apparently only been provided to the clerk's office and the council members, and they're not part of the record, I would make a motion that all the letters that have been read into the record, as well as all the remaining letters- letters become part of the record, and council members who don't have them be provided then by the clerk's office. That would be my substitute.
And I think every council member has a second. You heard a substitute motion, move the proponent second. Any discussion, reference a substitute motion. Ms. Mackey, you're recognized.
Yes, sir. As far as receiving the comments, I have received all the comments, and the continuance or motion to continue reading them has nothing to do whether or not I receive them or not. It's simply that this is a new method of how we're doing a public hearing and how the public is able to engage with us, and we are not sitting in person where they have the opportunity to stand up and read their own comment if they want it to, for others to be heard, or for the public to hear them. And so this is the opportunity for that to happen.
Baron, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I could not agree with Ms. Mackey anymore. I, I agree with her totally. We have, we must have some type of grace, some type of allowance for the constituents, our constituents to be able to be heard in such a very difficult time, and we know that we've heard from them over and over again about us even meeting online and their, and just limited access to how they can engage. So I would just encourage this body to, to let's just take the opportunity to hear from the citizens that have put forth these letters. And I agree, it doesn't matter whether or not we have a copy of it or not, it's just out of respect.
It's the moving properly, second for the substitute motion is to not continue, not waive the rules to move forward to continue with the, the remaining letters unread. Ms. Mathis can call the vote, but put the substitute motion.
Certainly. Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
No.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Toracio?
No.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Right, so the rigid motion. Ms. Mathis can call the vote for the motion, for the rigid motion.
Malinowski?
No.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Yes.
Toracio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ms. Mathis, for you, I'll continue to read the responses. Ms., you're recognized.
Just, just for my information, was that an extension of another 30 minutes, or was that an extension just to read all of the comments?
I think we're suspending the rules, and the rule is 30 minutes. I think you suspended the rule.
Thank you.
Of 30 minutes, yeah.
Just confirming.
Thank you, good point. Ms. Mathis, you make the change.
Okay. This, this, this is from a citizen, Anne Marie Johnson. For the record, I am a resident of District Six, and I am opposed to the proposed budget cut to the county's Conservation Division. The unique and important work of the Conservation Division adds tremendous value to the quality of life in this county. The Division's program positively impacts water, soil, and air quality, cultural heritage, and the conservation of natural areas, and the education of citizens about our natural resources. Please restore the Conservation Division funding to last year's level and restore the Conservation Division to the departments, to department status. Respectfully, Anne Marie Johnson.
Jeff Laney. Council members, please restore the Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and restore the Conservation Division to department status as it was prior to former Administrator Gerald Seale's reorganization in March of 2017. You have the ability to fur, to either further the eroding of relationships or build upon years of hard work. Please choose the latter, respectfully, Jeff Laney. Michelle?
This comment is from Charles Webber. I am a commissioner representing Richland County District One to the Richland County Conservation Commission. I request that the following be read during the public input and placed into the official records of Richland County's budget public hearing. Council members, I request that Richland County Council rejects the administrator's proposed funding sources for FY2223 budget for Richland Conservation Division, Richland Soil and Water Conservation District, and Richland County Conservation Commission, and restore their funding and sources to FY21 budget level and source, sources codes. At the request of the county administrator for public direction, I request Richland County Council to direct the county administrator to restore Richland Conservation District to department status. The FY2223 budget process is clear evidence that reorganization of the Richland County Conservation Division to department level has not worked. The budget process excluded input to the FY2223 budget by Richland Conservation Division, Richland Soil and Water District, and Richland County Conservation Commission. It was not until the county administrator presented the FY2223 proposed budget that problems were detected concerning the FY2223 budget. This has consumed enormous resources that would have been prevented if the Richland Conservation Department was a division.
Andrea?
This is, these are comments from James, Dr. James Blake Atkins. Please find contained herein my written comments on the proposed Richland County FY22 budget. I respectfully request these comments to be entered into the official record of, record of Richland County FY22 budget public hearing as though having been read orally during the public hearing, and providing these written comments as the District Five Commissioner on the Richland County Commit, Conservation Commission, former director of the Richland County Conservation Department 2010 through 2014, and as a four decades-long Richland County resident and taxpayer. My comments are, the proposed FY22 Richland County Conservation Division budget within the Community Planning and Development Department, CPND, does not comply with Richland County Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Article V, 111, Division Two, Section Two through 533, and therefore must be amended. Section Two through 533 states, in order to prepare or transmit to the county administrator detailed estimates of current and projected revenues, current expenditures, and requested appropriation, each department head, each board or commission, and each other office or agency supported in whole or in part by the county, including the county treasurer and the county auditor, shall, one, receive capital outlay request forms from the Director of Finance, two, receive budget revenue and expenditure worksheets from the Director of Finance. Enter estimated revenues for the entire current year on a budget revenue worksheets. Enter estimated expenditure for the entire current year on budget expenditure worksheets. Five, enter estimated revenues for coming year on budget revenue worksheets. Six, detail requested for capital outlay appropriations on capital outlay requested worksheets with subtotals for each account affected. That's time.
John Grego. I am John Grego, Chair of the Richland County Conservation Commission. We have commented in detail on many aspects of the budget cut, but I would like to focus today on how the Conservation Committee fits into the county's strategic plan and the general fund transfer. According to the 2020 Comprehensive Annual Fiscal Report, the county's council adopted a five-year strategic plan in July of 2020 to guide council priorities. The plan includes four priorities: core government service, constituent service, special interest by engaging the community, promoting economic development, and listed as one of the key outcomes of the following: increase the amount of land set aside for the conservation purpose. The Conservation Commission, as the county's entity, changed with the conservation of natural resources, needs council support to carry out the key outcome of the council's strategic plan. Though we have accomplished much, any proposal to add new expenses to our half a million or to replace county general fund support with withdrawal from the fun, from our fund balance would greatly compromise our ability to carry out future projects, let alone accelerate our activities. And I am particularly concerned with the general fund transfer has been cut from our budget. In 2017, the council charged us with management of Pine Wood Lake property and supported our management responsibilities through a general fund transfer. Since that time, the council has also asked us to manage the 2,550-acre Mill Creek property and 680-acre Cabin Branch property, but have provided no additional funds to do so. The general fund transfer has not changed from the original allocation of $143,988, and now has been proposed that we pay for management of county properties from our own special revenue balance. This justification for administration is that they plan to take the unexpected. Time.
The next comment is from James Barilla. I'm writing to express my concern over budget cuts that may result in loss of conservation management funding and reduced conservation efforts in the area. We need more attention to managing the resources we have and more attention to preserving and managing open space and wildlife habitat as the county and city develop. Please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and restore the Conservation Division to department status as it was prior to former Administrator Gerald Seale's reorganization in March 2017.
Andrea?
These comments are from David Shelley. I am a proud Richland County resident and alumni of South Carolina Public Schools, Furman University, and USC. My family roots in the, in the South Carolina mid-state date to the 19, excuse me, date to 1760s. I urge council to provide general fund support to the RSWCD at FY21 levels and restore the Conservation Division as a department. During the last 14 months of pandemic life, I have watched outdoor pastimes flourish in our Richland County. More people gardening, landscaping, boating, fishing, birdwatching, hiking, paddling, camping, neighborhood walking, and outdoor visiting. When we felt the world turned upside down, we turned to nature. The experience of nature is fundamental to us as people and the root of cultural traditions, traditions that bind family, friends, and communities. Even our community name, Richland, proclaims that we have been blessed with natural resources and cultural heritage. Nature cleans our air and water while providing jobs, food, forest products, and biodiversity, as well as opportunities for tourism, recreation, and renewal. Outdoor spaces anchor our architecture, celebrations, calendars, neighborhoods, and festivals. Our community name by itself, however, isn't a guarantee for future generations. Sustainable management of natural resources and cultural heritage requires vigilance and work. It requires a fully funded department-level co-equal voice in account and county decisions about development, wellness, local entrepreneurship, service, infrastructure, and environmental justice. It requires special revenue fund dedicated as intended to support grants, farmers, partnerships, and public projects, not salaries. It requires a voice with funding and status to honor our community name by ensuring a high quality of life and rich heritage for future generations. That's time.
Amy Ellis, sir. Dear sir or madam, I am the Executive Director of Camp Discovery, an environmental, educational nonprofit organization that serves students, educators, and families in our community. Camp Discovery's 116-acre nature preserve is located in Blythewood at 208 Claude Burnick Road. I am deeply concerned about the proposed budget cuts of the Richland County Conservation Commission. The support provided by the RCCC and Richland County Soil and Water Conservation Commission to Camp Discovery is vital to the camp's mission of engaging and inspiring through discovery in science and nature. Environmental education and historic preservation funding provided by RCCC and the Soil and Water Commission funds field trips, educational material, teacher training, and so many community environmental education projects. Over the years, the funding from the Conservation District has served thousands of people. RCCC funding, a historic preservation grant, allowed Camp Discovery to restore a historic corn crib from the 1800s to pristine condition. It is a major highlight of educational programs and community interest at Camp Discovery. Camp Discovery currently has a $19,997.11 grant proposal into RCC for the 2021 to 2022 school year. This project, Nature At Your, Nature To Your Doorsteps, cultivating citizen scientists, will serve over 300 Richland County Public School students, with the majority of those being from families at the poverty index. Camp Discovery committed $9,605 in making in-kind funding, including $5,975 from NASA Langley. The support of the Conservation District is critical to the camp, to the people Camp Discovery serves. Moreover, dedicated staff like Kenny Mullins and Chandra Cooper are incredible partners to me as Executive Director at Camp Discovery. Time.
All right. Please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and restore the Conservation Division to department status as it was prior to former Administrator Gerald Seale's reorganization in March 2017. Respectfully, John Nelson.
Andrea?
This comment is from Bill Stangler. I am writing to provide the following public comments on Richland County's proposed FY22 budget. As the Director of the Congaree River Keeper, a nonprofit organization that works to protect our local waterways and environment, I have seen firsthand the important and impactful work the Lower Richland County Conservation Department, Conservation Commission, and Soil and Water Conservation District do to protect and improve Richland County's environment and natural resources. I am concerned about the significant proposed cuts to their budget, and urge county council to ensure that these entities have necessary fundings and resources so that they continue their critical work for the benefit of all of Richland County citizens. Bill Stangler.
Carol Kozowski. I, Carol Kozowski, respectfully request that my comments be entered into the official record of the Richland County Budget Public Hearing to be held on May 20 of 2021, as though having been read orally during the public hearing. I am providing these written comments to Rich, as the Richland County Conservation Commission District Eight Commissioner, formerly 15-year Chair of the RCCC, and 50-year resident and taxpayer of Richland County. I have also had the honor of serving the county for several years on the Blue Ribbon Committee for the Flood Recovery and the Penny Transportation Advisory Committee. My comments, my comments request your consideration and action to restore the Conservation's budget, including general fund money, in the proposed FY22 budget to the FY22 level, and the restoration of the Division of Department status. I will now explain why you are requested to consider my appeal. In recent conversations and exchange between Richland County County Administrator and the RCCC, and from media interviews aired on WISTV, it is apparent that those who have developed the Conservation Division budget have only a limited understanding of the role and mission of the RCCC and its financial needs for succeed, for success in carrying out its mission. This is best illustrated in a series of questions and facts surrounding several misunderstandings regarding the restoration of the Conservation Division budget to FY22 levels with intact funding sources. Question, was the proposed conversation, conversation division budget developed with input from RCC staff and commissioners as required under Richland County ordinance, with the understanding of the Division's role and mission? Answer, no. Contrary to past practice, Conservation Division staff were not told to submit a budget, and we, and were told that a new Community Planning and Development Department staffer with no conservation experience would prepare the Division's budget without seeking. Time.
The next comment is from Mark Ridd. I have been a resident and registered voter in Columbia for over 30 years, and I am very aware of the significant impact the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District has on the land, water, forests, and wildlife in the county. The district is led by five dedicated Conservation District Commissioners who served without compensation. Due to the leadership and vision of the commissioners and staff, the district has been recognized for its outstanding programs on the state and national levels. I write in support of the county financial support for the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District. I'm very concerned that Richland County's proposed budget eliminates approximately $370,918 from the Conservation Division, which supports the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District. Richland County Conservation Commission and other District, Richland County Conservation Commission, and other conservation programs of Richland County. This will significantly reduce funding for conservation programs, staff services, and educational opportunities available in Richland County. Please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and restore the Conservation Division to department status. I request that my comments be entered into the record for the public hearing, for the budget hearing, and thank you for your consideration of restoring funding for the Conservation Division and the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District. Andrea?
This comment is from John O'Neill. On behalf of the Board of Directors and many members of the Friends of Harbison State Forest, we respectfully request that Richland County Council restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and restore the Conservation Division to department status. The Richland County Conservation Commission, RCC, has played an important role in the recreational life of Harbison State Forest for many years. It is not an exaggeration to say that without the Friends of Harbison State Forest and the grants we have received from the RCC, there would be little, if any, recreational infrastructure in the Harbison State Forest. Harbison State Forest, not Harbison State Park, is owned by and exists for the South Carolina Forestry Commission, and that means timbering, burning, and forestry management. It does not mean recreation. With RCC's help, the Friends of Harbison State Forest have turned Harbison State Forest into a recreational gem. The excellent trail system, 31 miles, and the signage and recreation buildings and the ongoing maintenance are all testament to the support we receive from Richland County through the RCC grant process. Harbison State Forest is a precious outdoor retreat for our community at a time when it has never been needed more. Without the help from Richland County through the RCC, the future of recreation at Harbison State Forest will suffer. To assure the members of Richland County Council of the merits continuing to invest in the Friends of Harbison State Forest through the RCC, we offer this statement. In our last fiscal year, as certified by our CPA, 96.4% of the funds spent by the Friends of Harbison State Forest went directly to our core mission, recreation and Harbison State Forest. Thank you for consideration of our request. Sincerely, John O'Neill. Tamara?
Sarah Green. Hello, my name is Sarah Green, and I am a Richland County resident living in Ermo. I am also the Executive Director of the South Carolina Wildlife Federation, the state's oldest conservation organization with over 24,000 supporters statewide. I'm writing to ask you to please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and consider adding additional funds to advance much-needed conservation efforts in Richland County. Using the Commission's special revenue fund balance to absorb and propose annual cut to the general fund, support of conservation will reduce the Commission's capital project funding for future conservation efforts. Specifically, wetland projects and restorations are critically needed for flood control to protect the citizens and property in our county in addition to being valuable, to being valuable wildlife habitats. As Richland County continues to grow, we must pay special attention to our natural resources and ensure the growth is sustainable. The South Carolina Wildlife Federation has partnered with the Richland County Soil and Water Conservation District and the Conservation Commission on many programs and projects over the years. I have personally witnessed the incredible impact that this work has done on the quality of life in Richland County. I have worked with many teachers who have benefited from the teaching trainer, the teacher training, and the classroom presentation, reaching thousands of schools' children each year. Making these local, real-world connections is vital, is vitally important in teaching and science and social study concepts as students, to students of all grade levels. Our county is well-respected statewide and its conservation works. This proposed budget will significantly reduce funding for conservation programs, services, and educational programs available in our county and statewide. Please restore Conservation Division funding to facilitate their programs and preserve the quality of life in Richland County. Sincerely, Sarah K. Green.
All right. This comment is from Karen Corbett. Hello, please don't cut conservation funding. Restore all conservation funding to last year's level. Please consider all reasons. Andrea?
This comment is from John Vogel. For entry into the record, I, John Vogel, oppose budget cuts to the Conservation Budget. This commission is too important to take drastic cuts. I regret that my council member has not taken the time to contact me. John Vogel. Tamara?
Amy Umberger. Greetings. I am writing this communication to lend support to the RCC. My name is Amy Umberger, and I am an environmental science teacher at Dutch Fork Elementary School Academy of Environmental Science. My school would be without the opportunity for students to be engaged in and involved in conservation education opportunities through grants and provide transportation to sites around Richland County, not to mention the provision of quality education programs that help to provide professional development to teachers as well as engaging experience for students. My school is a Title I school and depends on this funding so that our students that need these experiences can grow into environmentally literate Richland County citizens, scientists, in which our local community depends on, right? So please do not reduce this funding if at all possible. Michelle?
This next comment is from Stacy Ritchie. I am a historic preservation consultant and volunteer with historic sites in Richland County and beyond. I live and work from my home in unincorporated Richland County. Over the years, I have competed for and won several grants from the Richland County Conservation Commission. Please consider restoring the Conservation Division to a department so that they can engage with the budget process. I would also encourage you to restore funding to the Richland County Soil and Water Conservation District as it is impacting the RCC funds. You may not be aware, but the RCC grants for historic preservation are the only county grants of this type in the state that I am aware of. These funds have helped restore the historic Black Randolph Cemetery, as well as the 1872 Thompson Cottage built for and lived in by a black family, and the A.P. Williams Funeral Home, a local black business and historic building. There are literally no other bricks and mortar preservation grants for these sites, and any impact on the RCC's ability to budget and fund these important projects is a concern. The grant has gotten increasingly competitive, and many work-life projects go unfunded. I have worked in the historic preservation field for 16 years and cannot express enough to you how significant the RCC's work is to retaining Richland County's heritage and the things that make it an enjoyable place to live and visit. Please restore their prior department status and avoid straining their budget, which is already limited. In fact, I would urge you to use some money from the millions in the general fund to increase their support. It matters to your taxpayers. Andrea?
These comments were submitted by Guillermo Espinoza. Richland County's proposed budget will cut approximately $370,918 from the Conservation District, which supports the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District, Richland County Conservation Commission, and other conservation and environmental education programs in Richland County. These programs are cost-effective and proactive methods of protecting invaluable environmental and tourism resources in the county. And they empower future generations with the information they need to sustainably utilize the lands that you represent. So respectfully, reducing the budget of the Conservation Division is short-sighted. These initiatives pay for themselves by leveraging funds to bring additional grant awards, collaborating, collaborating with other organizations, and providing positive attention to the environmental tourism resources within the community. The short-term budget savings of this action would pale in comparison to the long-term cost of restoring environmental damage due to improper agricultural practices or ill-informed population that does not value the land that they live on. It is always more costly to repair something that is broken than it is to protect it in the first place, and it will never be the same as it was. By cutting the budget of the Conservation Division, you make it more difficult for the residents and businesses to protect these resources at what is a low cost to the county. If you empower your residents with these low-cost programs, they will do the work of protecting, excuse me, of protecting and sustainably utilizing the lands of the county for you. You save yourself time and money by reducing the direct intervention that the county staff would otherwise be responsible for in the case of having to repair a potential environmental issue. And you are, in effect, pushing that problem onto future generations, which will not be as well-informed or as well-equipped to deal with the fallout of this decision as you are. Please restore the Conservation Division funding. That's time.
Diane Wicker. Richland County's proposed budget cut will cut approximately $370,918 from Conservation Division, which supports the Richland County Soil and Water Conservation District, Richland County Conservation Commission, and other commission programs in Richland County. This will significantly reduce the funding of conservation programs, services, and educational programs available to the Richland County and statewide. Please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and restore the Conservation Division to department status. Michelle?
Please reinstate the funds being removed from the Soil and Conservation Division. This funding is needed for community programs. Jacqueline Green. Andrea?
These comments are submitted by Herman Rich. Richland County's proposed budget will cut approximately 307, 379,18,000 from the Conservation Division, which supports Richland Soil and Water Conservation District, Richland County's Conservation Commission, and other conservation programs in Richland County. This will significantly reduce funding for conservation programs, services, educational opportunities available in Richland County and statewide. Please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and restore the Conservation Division's to department status. Tamara?
Chris Johnson. Richland County's proposed budget will cut approximately 37, 370,918 from the Conservation Division, which supports the Richland County Soil and Water Conservation District, Richland County Conservation Commission, and other conservation programs in Richland County. This will significantly reduce the funding for conservation programs, services, and educational opportunities available in Richland County and statewide. I would kindly ask to please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and restore the Conservation Division to department status, and this will be entered into record for public hearing. Thank you. Chris Johnson. Michelle?
Okay. This one is from William Krimmel. Please know that I support full funding for our Conservation District. The proposed cut will do nothing but harm our county. If anything, we need the resources to be more vigilant about those matters that impact our soil and water in a county that is still growing and that is projected to continue growing. With best wishes. Andrea?
Um, so this, this comment is from Olga Agafanova. Richland County proposed budget will cut approximately 370,918 from the Conservation Division, which supports the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District, Richland County Conservation Commission, and other conservation programs in Richland County. This will significantly reduce funding for conservation programs, services, and educational opportunities available in Richland County and statewide. Please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's level and levels and restore the Conservation Division to department status. Thank you. Tamara?
James Grimes. Richland County proposed budget cut will cut approximately $370,918 from the Conservation Division, which supports the Richland County Soil and Water Conservation District, Richland County Conservation Commission, and other conservation programs in Richland County. This will significantly reduce the funding for conservation programs, services, and educational opportunities available in Richland County and statewide. Please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's level and restore the Conservation Division to department status. Respectfully, James M. Grimes. Michelle?
All right. This comment is from Jane Smoke. Richland County's proposed budget will cut approximately $370,918 from the Conservation Division, which supports the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District, Richland County Conservation Commission, and other conservation programs of Richland County. This will significantly reduce funding for conservation programs, services, and educational opportunities available in Richland County and statewide. Please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and restore the Conservation Division to department status. Events of late, such as the flooding of 2015 and the continued climate crisis we face nationally, emphasizes the need for climate literacy and local educational programs. We are slowly creating generations of citizens who understand the need for the resources that RSWCD offer, and we simply cannot move backward. We also need these generations to recognize the importance of local government, too. Thank you. Andrea?
These comments are from Elizabeth Newman-Betsy Newman. I am writing as a concerned citizen, a resident of Richland County, and a former recipient of a grant from the Richland County Conservation Commission. The support of the RCC made it possible for the Hyatt Park-Keenan Terrace Neighborhood Association to transform a vacant lot into an educational pollinator garden. See attached photos. The garden has become a favorite spot in which neighbors can gather, enjoy the flowers, and learn about the importance of pollinators. It is a small oasis in an underserved urban area. Because my personal, because of my personal experience and because I am aware of the significant conservation work that the RCC accomplishes annually to maintain the quality of our county's environment, I am dismayed to hear that the proposed cuts to the RCC's budget, Richland County Proposed FY22 Budget eliminates 100% of general fund support for Richland's Soil and Water Conservation District, RSWCD, as well as for land management at Pine Wood Lake Park, Mill Creek, and Cabin Branch properties, a total of $370,918. This proposal demands that the RCC's special revenue fund absorb these costs. This reduction will significantly reduce funding for conservation programs, services, and educational opportunities available in Richland County and statewide. We should all be proud of the importance, of the important conservation work of the RCC. Please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and restore Conservation Division to the department status as it was prior to former Administrator Gerald Seals' reorganization in March 2017. Michelle? I'm sorry, Tamara?
This is from Garrett Jobis. Dear county council members, I am writing in opposition of the proposed FY22 county budget that will strip over $37,000 in funding from the Richland County Conservation Division. This is 100, this is 100% of the funding that was previously allocated to the county general fund. These funds must be restored at FY21 level. The Conservation Division includes the Richland County Conservation Commission and is an important supporter of and funder of the county's cultural, historic, and environmental values. The Conservation Commission provides grants for historic preservation and conversation initiatives, and has developed a lower Richland tourist plan, which will, which would implement, which will implement it, excuse me, will promote and protect the area's cultural and environmental features for the rapidly growing area. The Conservation Division must be fully funded in the FY22 budget and fully staffed to continue to have this critical role in the safeguarding of the county's history, culture, and environment for today and future generations. Sincerely, Garrett Jobis. Michelle?
The next comment is from Ginger Jones. Hi, I am a STEM lab instructor at the Center for Achievement at Magnet Elementary School here in northeast Columbia. I have used the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District resources on a weekly basis to help me with the education of our students. I would ask you to please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and consider adding additional funding to advance conservation efforts in Richland County. They are an incredible resource and help make the world a better place. Andrea?
These comments are from Jordan Neese. I am submitting these comments for the May 20th public hearing on the FY22 budget. I recently learned that the proposed budget for the FY22 eliminates all general fund support for the RSWCD, as well as for land management at Pine Wood Lake, Mill Creek, and Cabin Branch. Requiring the RCC to use its special revenue fund balance to absorb the proposed cut will result in underfunded conservation projects, as well as potential conflict of interest if the fund is used for RSWCD staff expenses. Given that the recent audited financial reports for Richland County show that the county has a healthy general fund balance, it is unacceptable for the county council to cut back on conservation efforts. Not only will you cause lasting harm to future conservation projects into the livelihood of several county employees, you will also damage the trust you have been working to build back with the community since the council's recent scandals. I have always been impressed by the efforts of the county that the county has made in the past to conserve the beautiful land it is situated on, and am disappointed to see that legacy at risk. Please reinstate 370,918 in general fund support for the RSWCD and for land management. Sincerely, Jordan Neese. Tamara?
Karen Jackson. Dear Richland County Clerk to Council, I am writing today to oppose Richland County's proposed budget cut of approximately $37,918 from the Conservation Division, which supports the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District, Richland County Conservation Commission, and other conservation programs of Richland County. This will significantly reduce funding for conservation programs, services, and educational opportunities available in Richland County and statewide. Please restore Conservation Division funding to last year's levels and consider adding additional funding to advance conservation efforts in Richland County. For nearly six years, I have worked closely with staff from the Conservation Division and to see the impacts that have, they have on lives of Richland County residents, including K through 12. Each year, environmental education becomes more essential as our population grows, land is developed, and natural resources, resources are adversely impacted. I can't emphasize enough how much work has been done by the division to preserve and protect our natural resources, thus improving the lives of residents you serve. Please consider these budget cuts. Please reconsider these budget cuts. Please reconsider these budget cuts. Thanks, Karen Jackson. Michelle.
Okay, the next comments are from Dr. Rachel Tustin. I am writing to you about the significant proposed budget cuts. I have learned that Richland County's proposed budget will cut approximately three hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars from the Conservation Division, which supports the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District, Richland County Conservation Commission, and other conservation programs of Richland County. It is apparent that prioritizing the future health of our county, as well as educating its citizens to protect its health, is not a priority. That is both angering and heartbreaking. As a teacher, I have received professional support and funding support for years through the county and the Conservation Commission. Without their full funding, which is truly a microscopic portion of your budget, they cannot continue to function. Honestly, I think my school district spends more on copy-pating. License penalties alone covers most of their budget, each as it stands. The fact that you are doing this is most likely a direct result of how you misspent the penny tax over the last few years. I've had the privilege of having former Councilman James Manning come to dinner and see the work we are able to do with students from all backgrounds thanks to the support of the Conservation Division. Andrea.
These comments are from Catherine Fleming. I ask that my comments be entered into the record as though they were being read orally in a public hearing. The month of May is Historic Preservation Month. Tragically, Mr. Leonardo Brown, Richland County's Administrator, decided to mark this month honoring the committed and necessary work that preservationists past, present, and future have done in Richland County. Mr. Brown, in effect, has diminished the value of this work by eliminating about thirty percent of the county's budget allocated to Richland County's Conservation Commission, RCCC, the only entity within our county's government that is dedicated to conservation, historic preservation, grant-making work other than S-C-D-A-H.
Excuse me. Do not call names while you're reading it.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
The loss of these funds, as well as abrupt changes to the commission's longstanding operation, will no doubt reduce the effectiveness of the conservation to carry out its mandate despite statements to the contrary. The work of RCCC was established by county ordinance and confirmed repeatedly by official acts of Richland County Council to whom the RCCC reports. County Council has legal authority to uphold its strength, RCC, despite opinions to the contrary. Richland County is number one in the nation in preservation of black women's historical sites. This did not happen in a vacuum. As a preservationist with speaking engagement as far away as California, Colorado, Rhode Island, Maryland, and elsewhere, I'm the author of a book on historic preservation that is recognized nationally by the preservation community. I can assure you that all Richland County Conservation Commission is a model of excellence for those who see the links between preservation, community development, tourism. That's time. And I believe that was our last comment.
Thank you very much. Let me thank all of our citizens for their input and taking the time to share their concerns reference our fiscal year 2022 budget. Next item on our agenda is closer remark from Mr. Brown, our Administrator.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I echo your comments. Thank you to those for their public comments. Certainly appreciate that as part of the budgetary process. I'd like to close out by just reminding council of kind of the next steps. So part of the next steps include, as you consider the recommendations that I have made, as you consider information that's been shared with you by members of the public and by department heads and elected officials concerning the budget recommendations and then their feedback. Now is time for you, if you have any changes that you would like to see in the budget in terms of the recommendations, you can provide that information through the motions process between now and the time ultimately that the budget is ultimately adopted at the third reading. Hopefully, you received the email that staff sent that communicated to you that you could send an email to the email address for council budget motions. Certainly, you can make your motions known to the clerk of council as well. So again, Mr. Chair, thank you. Thank you to the public. Thank you to members of council. Thank you to the department heads and elected officials for the budget process. And I certainly wait to hear any feedback from the council concerning the budget recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. The next, Mr. Toracio.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the clerk's office for reading through all of those. I know it's a very unusual process, and they just stuck with it diligently. And so I just wanted to express appreciation to those folks.
The next item on our agenda is a German, Chair, and ten most.
Mr. Chair.
I'll not see you recognize.
Thanks, sir. Just one comment. There were a few derogatory comments and accusations in some of those letters. I think they were uncalled for, and I hope in the future that our residents do not resort to those type of tactics when addressing this council. Thank you.
Ms. McBride.
To Chair, I would just like to thank the citizens that wrote in. I had the opportunity to read the letters that were submitted and did not see, I voted no, because I did not see the need to hear them again, in addition to reading a number of other letters. But I do support the active participation of citizens. And I, again, I want to thank them for writing in and expressing their concerns. Thank you.
The comments are a motion for adjournment.
Move, sir.
Second.
Move and proper second for adjournment. Ms. Matthews, can you call over the motion to adjourn?
Certainly. Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Toracio.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Barron.
Yes.
Over to Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Again, thank everyone, and everyone have a lovely evening.